All right, everyone, let's go ahead and get started. It's four o'clock. Good to have you all here. Nice to see a good crowd all the way back there. Thank you all for coming. My name is Kelly Dampf. I'm the chancellor here. I'm pleased that we have Dr. Chuck Welch, who is our president of the system, to come share with you an overview of the Huron Report. And I will ask Chuck to give you some sense of his take on things, what the Huron Report means to the system office. So he'll lead us off, a few slides, discussions there. Then I'll come back and talk about some things that I think are most relevant for our campus to be thinking about. I will tell you that the report that we got was, there's not like a narrative report. It's a series of slides that need to be interpreted and they are, it takes some time to learn what those slides all mean. That's what today is meant to be, the first time to start interpreting these slides. There are hundreds, literally hundreds of slides in the full report and a huge data set that Chuck will tell you more about in a little bit. We will start working through that as a campus as we move forward. So the initiative is called Accelerate ASU because it is a system-wide efficiency study. It's something that the trustees asked for. I'm calling it Moving Forward from Study to Strategic Plan. We are actually going to use this as the basis for kicking off our strategic planning initiative. Another subtitle I played with was From Huron to Eternity. Probably too light of a title anyways, but we really do see this as a launching pad. This is the first step of a long series of discussions that will take us forward in determining and helping you all help us determine the future of Arkansas State University. That said, I'm going to pass the clicker and the microphone off to Dr. Welch. And there you are, right there.
Thank you. One thing that Dr. Dampf has mentioned was that there was a lot more information. I think at the board--
It's just not working. And I'm so quiet, we need this. At the board meeting that we had a week or so ago, that report was about 50 slides, I think, give or take a few. The full report, and when I say "report," it's PowerPoint slides. As Dr. Dampf said, there's not some narrative written report that we received. But the full number of slides was somewhere around 250, plus the data sets, which are far more pages than that. When they did the exit, sort of the exit presentation, for me, for the administrative and for the academic, it took about five and a half hours. So I'm assuming you don't want to sit here for five and a half hours. So what we're going to do today is give you a short synopsis of this and then we're going to release the entire deck of slides to you. We have no problem with you seeing all of that. Some of it you'll be like, "I don't know, some of this, I still don't quite understand what some of it says." But we'll release every bit of that to all of you and we're happy to release those data sets, too. It's lots and lots and lots of information. But we wanted an opportunity first to kind of put some context to this for you before you start reading through that and hopefully, you know, not getting panicked or something like that. So let me talk about, just for a few minutes, what this is, what this was, what was the reason for doing this? Because I think there's been a lot of misunderstanding and concern about this. First of all, this was an initiative that was suggested by our Board of Trustees. There was no single incident that triggered the desire to do this report. There've been some that have asked, "Well, are we doing this because we have a $3.8 million deficit on campus this year?" No. This actually, the RFP for this was issued in March of last year, long before what we knew enrollment was going to look like this year. And the staffing component, we were requested to do a staffing survey in December of 2016 by the Board of Trustees. So this goes back a couple of years. This all started when one of our trustees learned of a similar efficiency study that was done at St. Bernard's. Now, obviously, it's a very different enterprise, but they were able to look at their processes and the way they do things and they thought, "Can we do this for higher education?" And so that's what really began this whole process of us thinking about and talking about doing this. And it's literally taken two and a half years, three years, and probably was first mentioned four years ago. We wanted to do two things. One, look at system-wide. Could we be working together better? Could we find some better economies of scale that don't currently exist? We knew we could, but where are those? And how can we now start to operate in that manner? And then campus-specific approaches. Let's look at some issues that are specific to the member campuses of the system so that we can find that data, take that data back to the campuses, and allow the campuses then to begin to chart their course for the future. One thing I want to say, too, is the whole intent of this was a long-term view. You know, we keep hearing about college or university campuses laying people off. We keep hearing about college and university campuses closing down in some instances. Moody's has now said they have a negative outlook for all of higher education. And one of the things that we've talked about a lot with our board is, we don't want to just sort of ignore all of this and wake up one day and find ourselves in one of those situations. We want to start now being as proactive as we can, being as data-informed as we can so that we can plan for those future incidents and make sure that we're always a step ahead of that and don't find ourselves in the situation a lot of campuses do. A lot of discussion, obviously, about how much this cost. It was roughly $1 million. We did this, we did an RFP, we had several bids. There were no in-state bids. They were all out-of-state entities. We chose this one because they had done a number of similar types of studies for other colleges and universities across the country. The way that this was paid for, half of it came from system reserves. Over the last five years, we have been able to, through essentially cost-containment initiatives at the system level, amass about $1.2 million in reserves. So we said, "That's a great way of using some of those reserves monies so our campuses don't have to pay for it to do it." The other half of that came from Governor Hutchinson. It took about 10 seconds to convince him this is something that he ought to help fund because he said, "One of my number-one initiatives for the state is being efficiency and making our campuses be more efficient, making our state agencies be more efficient." And he said, "If you guys can take this, use data, not be anecdotal, and begin to plan for the future and try to find efficiencies, I'm all on board with that." So he paid for the other half of that. None of this came from campus amounts or from your budget this year. The goal was to try to identify opportunities where we can increase income and reduce costs. One of the first things Huron said to us when they were doing the exit report is, "You are very lean. You're lean at the system level, you're lean at the campus level." They said, "You're actually more lean than what we find at a lot of colleges and universities around the country." They didn't make a single recommendation to eliminate a position. Everybody can take a deep breath. No recommendations to eliminate positions. In fact, they said, "You probably have more opportunities to increase income than you do to reduce costs." And we'll break those down in a little bit greater detail in a few moments. So one of the great findings, and what's interesting is, when our trustees asked for the staffing study a few years ago, the comment was made in the board meeting, "We're not asking for a staffing study to reduce staff. We're asking for a staffing study to even find out if we have enough staff or if we have staff in the right places." And I think we were able to find some very good data in this that indeed we do in almost all instances. And then the challenge now is, how do we prioritize the next steps? This will be done through a shared governance process. One of the things I want you to understand about this is, Huron did not come back and say, "This is a problem." And we said, "Okay, then we're going to go fix it." These are things that they gave recommendations, some of which we think we need to address, some of which we're like, "Nah, I'm not sure they fully understood why things have to go that way." But all of this is going to go back to the campuses. And now the work will start on each campus with developing action plans for how we respond to some of these initiatives. And that'll be a little bit more clear here in a few seconds. You got the clicker? He already did it. One of the first that they came out from a system-level recommendation was improving our data systems, improving the way that we analyze data, particularly considering that we have a new statewide funding formula that has a very different way of looking at data, analyzing that, understanding that, and moving forward. And then secondly, through an academic cost accounting system, which we'll talk about in much greater detail here in a few moments. But one of the things they said to us was, "You have lots and lots of data, but you need to improve the systems, the way you analyze, and the way you go about utilizing data to make decisions." That was both system-level as well as the campus-level. And the next three slides just really show you, go ahead, Kelly, show you very quickly. This is, you can just hit the first one, the second one, and the third one. These were, this was the initial list of data requests from Huron. It was an enormous amount of data that they requested from all of our campuses so that they could then begin to take that data, and it was in three pockets, basically. It was in system-level operations, it was in functional areas, it was in academic areas. They could take those three areas, utilize all of that data, plug it into some of these different models and systems, and be able to talk to us about what we were doing. So we're already talking about how can we improve that. We've already had some meetings with our chancellors, we've had some meetings with some of our staff on the campuses, and then certainly there'll be discussions that we'll have with everyone else. Increase enrollment. I mean, yeah, duh. I mean, we know that, right? That's a no-brainer. But what they were able to show us was a number of different factors and trends and the way that we've used our data to focus on that, some of the places that we're out of sync with our peer institutions or with our competitor institutions and ways that we can be more strategic in the way that we go about that enrollment. And understanding that an enrollment is not an enrollment is not an enrollment, but making sure that we understand that. Again, that's every campus. That's not just the Jonesboro campus. Explore changes to procurement practices. We knew this, but we did not have a data set that showed us all of the different vendors that we were using across the campuses, the differences in the ways that we were using those vendors, how if we'd have been buying under one unified system, perhaps how much cheaper that could be. And so they were able to give us a lot of data and some of that's in that 200-and-some-odd slide information that we'll be providing to you tomorrow. Evaluate our IT service delivery options. And this is something Henry Torres has worked very closely with the Huron Group and our other IT folks and talked to them about different ways. They brought in an IT specialist and talked to us about, "If you did this, if you collaborated, if campuses shared resources, if you did X, Y, and Z, it could be a cost saver for some campuses and it could be a revenue source for other campuses within the system." And so it's something that we feel like is some real opportunity going forward. And then finally was streamlining intrasystem transfer options. You know, two-year college transfer rates in the state of Arkansas are abysmal and we knew that. We actually did a separate transfer study at the system level and learned a whole lot of information about ways that we can better improve that. Now, you know, I know that there, anecdotally, there are those that will say, "Well, those community college students probably aren't going to perform well if they do transfer to a state." We actually have data that shows community college transfer students who come to this campus persist and graduate at a higher rate than our native students do. And so it's understanding that data. It's understanding that some of these anecdotes aren't really what's happening and that we need to understand that and see, this could be a real opportunity to help us in a lot of different areas. And there's, he's got the thing about the transfer study that we did. And we now have a transfer task force that was just appointed. The chancellors from each system appointed, Karen Wheeler and Jason Smith from this campus will represent, to work together to talk about how can we find ways for those students who are ready to do it and want to do it to maybe break down some of those obstacles and to assist them to help us from that perspective. And I know this is something very important to the chancellor that he will probably talk about a little bit more. All right, I'm going to stop there and do campus level for a minute, then I'll come back.
All right. So I'm going to show a few slides here to give you some context of some of the interesting findings that we discovered through the Huron study. We will have plenty of time for questions at the end. There's some microphones down on the floor for people to ask questions at the end because this is a town hall meeting after all. My intention for this whole, the consequence or the end result of this study is for this to be a beginning of a conversation amongst all of us. This is a shared responsibility by faculty and staff and even students in some regards about what we do with the data that are in front of us now. And our strategic planning initiative begins now. We started doing it in the fall, then we discovered that Huron was coming and we put it on a hiatus for a while. Faculty Senate Chair suggested we not have both of those running at the same time. It's great advice. Thank you, Mike. You all can thank Mike for doing that. But now that we're done with the Huron study, now we can start picking up the strategic planning exercise. And the initiative, the strategic planning initiative, will be run by Shawnee Carrier out of the Delta Center and she will, she has run a lot of strategic plans before and she will be the director of this strategic planning exercise. But there will be representatives on the steering committee from the student body, from the faculty, from the staff, from the business community, alumni, government, secondary schools, and other educational systems as well, again, trying to get as many voices as possible speaking to us so we can make informed decisions about the future of our university. This is what the strategic planning steering committee will look like without the names. We actually have names populating each of these cells here, but we want to give you a sense of the breadth of information we will be gathering as we move forward through strategic planning. The timeline for the strategic plan will start immediately, starting tomorrow. Shawnee will start putting together a task force to look at certain areas. We will talk to some students before they leave. We will talk to staff and our community partners throughout the summer while staff are here and things will look quieter. When students and faculty come back in the fall, we'll continue collecting data from them. Hopefully, the data collection process will be completed by the middle or the end of the fall semester and then we'll start putting together the recommendations and ratifying the report late winter into the spring semester, have something ready for us to start working on next year, I hope. So the Huron study has two basic sets of recommendations. The first is, we can, let me see, right here, where we can make more money, revenue generation, and where we can reduce costs over here. The reduced costs are mostly administrative costs, that's what they mostly look at, system level and administrative costs at the university level. The revenue generation is mostly, as you'll see these categories, enrollment management, increase full-time, first-time freshman enrollment. We've been talking about that for a long time. Develop a different discounting strategy, that's how much scholarships we give to students who are coming here. Increase first-year retention by two to five points. All of these things have financial consequences at the end and they've actually tallied these things up. And you can see just with their recommendations here, $3 to $7 million in revenue enhancement by changing how we recruit students and the efforts we take to recruit students. They also suggest lots of cost reductions, how we can save money from an administrative perspective. And there's another $7 to $13 million proposed over a long period of time. Remember, we spent a lot of money paying for the report, one-time expenditure. The long-term consequences will echo out for quite a few years from here on out. Here are some examples of, and Chuck, I'm going to let you speak about this. This is about the outsourcing question here. This is about data, this is about money savings that have been done through outsourcing.
Yeah, one of the things, the recommendation they had from outsourcing was interesting. It was not, "You need to go do more outsourcing." It was, "You need to better coordinate the outsourcing that you already do." For example, if you look at bookstore, we have three institutions within our system that currently use Follett for bookstore, but they're actually on two contracts right now. Mountain Home is actually a part of the Jonesboro contract, which was a benefit to both entities. Why isn't Mid-South a part of that? Why aren't we potentially looking at BB, who's currently in-house, who very well may be going to an outsourced bookstore, them also being a part of that and having one contract that leverages the volume, obviously, and helps us in saving money? Same thing from food services. Same thing from janitorial is a great example. If you look at BB and you look at Mid-South, they use the same janitorial outsourcing service, but they have wildly different contracts. Now, Mid-South's contract was signed before they became a part of our system. But now we've got to talk about, as those contracts expire, we need to look at having a uniform contract that correctly benefits both of those entities. But then if you go to the next page and you look at, one of the things that this shows you is, for example, custodial cost per gross square foot. ASU BB, it's $1.24. They're outsourced. Mid-South, it's $2.07. They're outsourced. Jonesboro's $1.27. Not necessarily going to save you any money to outsource at Jonesboro. So it tells us, from a data standpoint, we're probably doing pretty well right there. We need to keep doing what we're doing. What it also tells us, though, is, when we get the chance to renegotiate the old Mid-South Community College contract, we've got to renegotiate that and try to bring them more in line with ASU BB. So what it told, they did not recommend additional outsourcing opportunities. They said, "Just you've got to be able to look at this data, know how to compute it, know what are the benchmarks to look at, and make sure you're always staying within those benchmarks." It's data-informed decision-making. So the good news is, at least for this campus perspective, we're in good shape on that standpoint. It's just a matter of continuing to watch that to make sure those trends don't change. BB's a great example, I'll use them. They've always had an in-house bookstore. It used to be a large money-making enterprise for them. Every year, that has declined as the changes have happened in bookstores. And so now they're having to look at making some difficult decisions from that standpoint. It's knowing what the data says, knowing what your benchmarks are, and being able to constantly focus on that, and that's what they've given us. The other thing that was, this is not really outsourcing, but we decided to put this in here together because this is the kind of stuff I know that creates a lot of angst, was about benefits administration. First of all, let me be clear with you that our intention on any of these changes, if they were ever to come, and they would come following recommendations from the system and campus benefits committees, okay? But they would be for future employees. What we did with APRES, what we did with ATRS, what we did when we did TIAA craft vesting a few years ago, and grandfathered in the current employees and looked more towards the long-term future. So this is not an exercise where we're saying, "Hey, we're going to run out and cut your benefits." It's, "We're going to look at this at long term." But one of the things they pointed out was, when you look at our TIAA craft-defined contribution, system-wide, we're at 10%. Now, Mid-South was at 14 when they were Mid-South Community College. When they came into our system, they changed that to 10% for future employees. Their employees that came over got grandfathered in. So that's a little bit of old data. But then if you look at every other institution, it's less in our peer group, including the University of Arkansas system, not UCA, I guess they're still at 10, but Middle Tennessee State, Appalachian State, and Western Kentucky. Again, no decisions have been made here. This is something we've got to look at, a lot of different data, we've got to look at from a number of different standpoints and work with our campus shared governance units, but it is an issue that needs to be looked at. Issues like our early retirement plan, issues like how we play for retiree programs and things like that. Again, any kinds of decisions on those things would be made out a few years out. We're not going to say, "Hey, we're changing this tomorrow" to you or anything like that. We're very sensitive to that. There was something else I was going to say on human resources. Oh, the other two things were on healthcare. One of the things that they recommended were for us to look at two different ways of changing up the tiers. And this is actually something that we had talked about among our group, among our shared governance group on benefits. One was having multiple types of plans, a Cadillac plan, a gold tier plan, a silver tier plan, a bronze tier plan, whatever the case might be. So that someone who really uses a lot might want the Cadillac plan, someone who doesn't use it as much might want one of the other plans, and so that's one to look at. And the other one is tiered by salary. And that's something that the chancellor and I have talked a lot about. We've talked to the committee about it. This is something that the UA system has moved to, where those people making higher amounts perhaps pay a little bit more so that when it goes up, those employees of ours who are at lower pay levels don't take as inordinate amount of the share there of the cost going up. So that's something we think that needs to be looked at as well. Again, no final decisions made. We'll work with the committees, but the end result could be that it could be beneficial for certain aspects of our campus and it could ultimately cut costs for the plan itself. And these are not out of line with what's happening in a lot of different things around the country, but now we've got to take it, put it into our own lens, look at our own data, work with our own groups, and make sure that those are the outcomes we're looking for.
Thank you. So that was, those were like cost savings examples that the Huron Report points to. I want to look a little bit now at cost, at revenue-enhancing programs that we could be looking at. These are, and these are, this is more of a state perspective here. This is a chart they put together saying the time to implement versus the complexity here. So the higher it is on the Y-axis, the more complicated, the farther it is on the X-axis, the more time it will take to implement. These are system-level kinds of changes here, very complex changes that we should go into carefully. These are things that are more done on our campus. And so retention and graduation rate, discounting, admission strategies, alumni engagement, those are things that we can do here and those are ways we can raise our income, our revenue profile. And so here are some examples here. So retention and graduation rate, something we've talked about even before I started working here. When I came for my job presentation, standing on this very stage, I brought up this issue here. But you'll see that our, there's some data here. Our retention rate just last year dropped from 74.9% to 72.8%. That means we lost more than one-quarter of our freshman class last year. That puts us below schools, below average schools that we're compared to. And retention is actually part of our productivity model that will be, that will have to, that will affect our funding in the future. So retention's a big deal and we're not doing very well by our students. I mean, there's a, I have a moral obligation to make sure students graduate, but there's also, whoops, there's also a huge financial impact when students leave here. Every 1% of students that we lose has a financial impact, just in tuition, of $73,000. And that plays out over time where it's something like $250,000 for every 1% of students that we lose. And so it can have a very huge problem for us and you see how we compare to our peers. We're not doing very well here in graduation rates. So what are we doing? This past year, we started the completion commission, again, on this very stage, introducing people who are looking at the problem. What are we doing here on our campus? Many of the members of the commission are actually out there in the audience. What are we doing on our campus? What can we do differently? What policies could we change to make retention and graduation more likely for our students? And then policies that are proposed by the commission will go through shared governance and we will, together, figure out ways to help our students be more likely to retain and also to graduate. This month, in my mid-month report, I'll give you a summary of all the things they've done in the past, the past six months while they've been in operation. One of the, one of their goals, though, is to get us to turn this, this sort of a rollercoaster, flat rollercoaster we've been on into an upward trajectory here to ultimately an 85% retention rate in the first year. That's an audacious goal. When the HLC people were here on our campus, they said, "That seems like a really far-reaching goal." And I said, "Yeah, it is a far-reaching goal. We're not here to do easy things, we're here to do hard things." And it will be hard to get to 85%, but it's something we should aspire to. And so we have that in mind. One of the things the committee has recommended is that we engage in a consulting firm who offers software support called Civitas Learning. They use our data, help us predict which students will do poorly, and then help us program towards those students who we think might be less likely to graduate and actually will make our systems work a lot better. And we have a problem, our data is not, are not very good, and so we have to be careful to make sure we have good data to feed into Civitas, but we're excited about having them. The Huron Report commends us for going in this direction. They are familiar with what Civitas does and they think this is a good idea for us. Just an example of how we're responding to these findings. Here is enrollment data. This is freshman enrollment from the past several years and you can see, you see this decline over time. And what may interest you is the blue bar. The blue bar is in-state resident enrollment and you can see it's going down from somewhere on 1450 in 2002 to 1172 this past year. And again, our smallest class overall in several years. We've got to turn that tide around as well. And so we're re-energizing our recruiting efforts, trying to turn around what we're doing there, but look at the impact here. Half a million to $1 million just by changing or increasing the number of students who are coming here, just getting back to where we were before. Now, one of the reasons these numbers were so high before is because our enrollment standards were lower before. It was a lot easier to get into Arkansas State University. When we increased our enrollment standards, our enrollment decreased, which is unusual. Most universities find the opposite, that when you increase your standards, the number of students actually goes up. The good news is, the quality of students has gone up. Our average ACT is over 24 in this past class, but the bad news is, it was a small class. So we retained fewer students last year and we brought in fewer students. That's a double whammy that really affected us and resulted in us having a $3.8 million budget deficit this year. Notice that while we were losing about 1% of in-state students, ULR and Arkansas were gaining 1%. So it's not that there's not enough students out there, they're just going somewhere else. And so we need to change what we're doing. One of the things we did is look at where our students are coming from. The bigger the circle, that's the more, that's greater the number of students who come to Arkansas State University. Shouldn't surprise you that Craighead County is one of our, is the largest feeder county for our school. What may surprise you is that it is on the left side of the enrollment change chart. That's 30% fewer students two years ago from Craighead County came to Arkansas State. And this chart says, "Well, you're doing pretty good in Little Rock and Saline and Pulaski County." The fact is, that was two years ago. This past year, Saline and Pulaski County were down here. We lost Saline and Pulaski County as well. So we lost Little Rock and we lost Jonesboro in the area. And we shouldn't lose Jonesboro at all, but we've got to redouble our efforts down in Little Rock for sure. So to do that, we did some changes. Many of you were involved in this. We went down to Little Rock, we took Jonesboro, we took Arkansas State University down to We took Arkansas State University down to Little Rock and had a very successful dinner, recruiting students to become part, become part of our class next year. We replicated that in Jonesboro. I was worried that there was, maybe we didn't have to do that for our own, our own students here, but I heard over and over again from parents of students saying, "Thank you for recruiting our students the way UCA and UALR and Fayetteville are recruiting my children." And so, so, and it was a hugely successful event. This past weekend, two Saturdays ago, we had the PAC Preview Event, biggest event we've ever had, so big we had to have it outside in the lawn. These are juniors who will be, we will be recruiting next year. A lot of excitement on our campus about recruiting. Here's some good news, too, to let you know. Number of admits to our campus is higher than it's ever been at this time. These data here are from the past several years. These are actually the end-of-March data. This is as of yesterday. So, we are way ahead of schedule, 200 more admits this year at this point than we had at the end of last March, and so we still have two more weeks to go. So, those are good signs for us, and I'm excited about that. Some other yield indicators, these are March housing deposits. Again, how we use data to make decisions. This is last year's housing deposits. This is, this is day-to-day, so March 5th till now, or March 11th till now. You can see that we are about 40 or 50 ahead by day, and we're actually, that gap is changing. So, a lot of students are putting down deposits for a living in the residence hall. Another good yield indicator is scholarships that have been accepted. So, we've offered scholarships, and these are numbers that have been accepted this year at, last year at this time, we had 974 scholarships accepted today, or yesterday at this time, 1,206 scholarships. So, we're, I feel really good about the fall, but we need to yield all of them. We need them all to come here, and so we're working really hard on yielding those students. Discounting strategies. This really has to do with scholarshipping. We discount at a very high rate. Typical student who comes to Arkansas State University, according to these data, we didn't know this before the study, pays only 56% of the tuition, of their tuition. So, they have 44% discounting for scholarships. We also scholarship very heavily out-of-state students versus in-state students, and we're, we have to change that, that, our, our idea right now, students won't come here if we don't scholarship them. And that's really been our recruiting strategy, is to scholarship really heavily, and our recruiting office is turning that tide a little bit and not offering, or changing how we offer scholarships. That will take some time. You have to be careful about doing this too quickly, because students and counselors get used to how we did things in the past, and you can't change too dramatically how you do things, but we need to change this because, look at, this is out-of-state tuition and fees. This is Arkansas State University right here. Remember, not all of them, that's what our fee, that's what our tuition and fee is, that not everyone's paying that. Most people are paying in-state tuition, but compare that to Middle Tennessee State, which is over here. And so, you can see, people that are much like us are charging a lot more for out-of-state tuition than in-state tuition. Here's, this is a small example of a problem we have. Out-of-state students who qualified at a certain level to get reduced tuition to come here, we tell them that they get in-state tuition. The governor froze in-state tuition this year, and we accepted. I think it's a great idea. I'm happy to freeze in-state tuition, but that meant that every out-of-state student who was given in-state tuition, their tuition was frozen as well. So, we have to change how we message that reward. Instead of saying you get in-state tuition, we're changing it to now you get a scholarship that will be equivalent to a certain level, which is near in-state tuition, so that if we increase out-of-state tuition, it will affect everybody, not just the people who are not getting scholarships. It's complicated, but things that we're having to work through now to, to do a better job of not giving away so many scholarships. You can see the impact here, $2 million. One of the biggest things we can do is change how we scholarship people who come to our campus. This is a study from an administrative level here, and it's pretty, pretty surprising here. One-third of supervisors, system-wide, have only one or two direct reports. As one-third of people in the entire system have only one or two or three direct reports. Now, there may be a reason for this. We don't understand what the data mean right now, so we're going to have to go back in the data and understand what, what the data are telling us. It may be that this is a, a consequence of old practices of, the only way to give someone a raise was to promote them into a new classification. We don't know that. We're going to have to go back and look at that. That's, that's a, a way we can save money, organize, redesign, organize our structure, and there's a huge money savings there as well. Those are things we'll have to look into. We, again, this is just the beginning of looking into these data. Coach, you want to talk about this slide here?
So, you know, one of the things that, that we've done, system-wide, oh, first of all, let me, let me say this. I failed to mention, there was a leadership team that was developed that worked, what was their name, Julie? Steering Committee, thank you, I went blank. Steering Committee that was appointed to help work with Huron on this, to help answer questions, identify issues. Mike McDaniel was a member from this campus. Amy Holt was a member from this campus. Myra Goodwin, was that it? Those were the three, I think, from this campus. We had one from each campus, and they worked with the Huron representatives throughout the entire process to help them in aiding and answering questions and navigating how this worked. So, this sort, one of the things the board has really talked to me about a lot over the last four or five years is really understanding our position, and then taking that understanding of our position and trying to figure out how do we get to a better position. So, from a financial standpoint, you know, really fully understanding our composite financial index and where we are, understanding days of cash on hand, understanding all of these important ratios and pieces of data that are important to the financial health of our institution. Now, some of them were doing pretty good, some were not. So, if we're not doing as well, then what's the action plan going to be for improving that? Well, that's exactly what the intent of this study was. And so, when you go to the academic side, it was, "Let's have an understanding of what our standing is in each one of our programs." And so, this was probably worth the cost of the study. They built us an academic cost accounting model, and we're going to show you this in just a second, and the complexity of it. One individual entered 3,365 courses manually and built the system for every course in the system, tied that to financial aid, tied that to the number of students, tied that to instructional costs, and built us this model that we can now, on a daily basis, have a much better understanding of where we are, what we need to be doing, and what we need to be doing better. So, this example is actually from ASU Mountain Home. This is the one that Huron used when they did the exit study for us. So, I'll just use it because it's the only one that's been fully developed at this point. So, what they did is they take, again, every course that we offer system-wide at every campus. So, here they've got one, two, three, six courses that they listed out. By course, they are able to show through the model what the instructional costs are. That's just the direct instructional costs for that, for that particular course. Then they're able to show overhead, and overhead is going to be departmental-specific, because obviously if you put in institutional support, if you put in the chancellor and vice chancellors and all that, it would just be a wash, because it would be equaled out. So, these are more specific to their respective departments. Then they took financial aid, and essentially what that does is help show you how much you're not getting. It's sort of that discounting strategy a little bit that the Chancellor was talking about a while ago, that totals up to show you what a total cost is per course. Then you see how many credit hours that course is generating, to show you a cost per credit hour per course. Now, we all understand that there are certain programs that are high-cost and inherently limited in the number of students they can have. We understand that. We also understand there are programs and courses that aren't as high-cost that can have a lot more students. So, we understand that you can't, everything's not apples-to-apples when you look at the numbers, but at least we understand the numbers. At least we have those, and our academic administrators on the campuses can then take those and work towards trying to determine what is the problem here, or are we not funding at a high enough level here? So, if you look at this, you go from Math III, whatever that course is, at ASU Mountain Home, is $63 per credit hour, up to a paramedic course that's $272 per credit hour. Well, obviously, they're only generating 15 credit hours, so that's probably something that we need to look at right there on the spot, but it gives you an idea, by course, what it's costing the institution to offer that course, and that'd be every section of that course. Go to the next slide. The next slide is the actual model itself, and this is essentially the table of contents. And I just put this up here to show you just how complex this is. These are all of the different model summary tabs that are available, and then the tabs go way, 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 way across on the right. It's in an Excel spreadsheet, but it shows you everything that was used, from cost per program summary, faculty statistics, general education core, growth trends, traditional and online course. There's a ton of information that's in here that can now be utilized. We had no access, well, we had access, I guess, but we had no model. So, an individual who does this for a living came in and built a model for us that our deans can use, that our academic administrators can use, that our department chairs can use, to try to make sure that we're doing the things that we want to be doing. And this is really, and I'm going to hand this back over to Kelly in just a second, but this is really the, the critical slide, because here's what all of that data will ultimately tell us. And first of all, I showed you course level. You can then start combining those and stacking those to go to program level, to go to major level, to go to departmental level. There's so many different pieces of information that you could look at there to see. But what this shows us is, again, another one of these four quadrant charts. The top-left quadrant, high-cost enrollment decline. So, every program that we would have would ultimately, or a course, or a major, would fall into one of these different quadrants. High-cost enrollment decline. Bottom-left is low-cost enrollment decline. Top-right is high-cost enrollment growth, and bottom-right is low-cost enrollment growth. Well, obviously, we'd love for everything to be right of the line, of the, of the vertical line. We'd want everything to be in enrollment growth. Obviously, we'd love to have as many things as we could in low-cost enrollment growth, but obviously we realize that's not realistic when you look at the wide array of programs that we have. But what we really need to look at are these things that are on the left side of that line, and the intent of this is not, "If they fall on that side of the line, let's get rid of them." That's not the goal. The goal is why and what's going to be our action plan? How can we improve that now that we better understand it? Questions you might ask, "Are there efficiencies that can be gained in the various programs to reduce costs? Is there a tipping point at which the program cost would best be optimized? Should institutional investment be reduced? Should institutional investment be increased?" Is another one. Maybe it's perhaps we're not subsidizing that program enough to help it to get to the things that it needs. So, now we have all that data, all right? It's all a lot of raw data in this incredible system that we're going to have to maintain on an annual basis and constantly keep it updated. But what we will be able to do is show, by course, by program, by major, to help us as we allocate budget resources, as we plan, and as we look at the programs and what's happening, to make sure that we're putting our dollars where they're going to be used the best to make sure that we have growth and development. I think you were going to talk about that.
So, this is just an example of what the charts can look like using the data, and we only have like four slides left, so we're getting close to the end and start taking questions, so get ready for that. But just to, this is exactly the same as this matrix right here, but now we've got our data in there, sorry, and you can see, this is a, a high cost, but also growing enrollment in this program, moderate cost, but declining enrollment, not low enrollment, declining enrollment. Now, the question is, what can we do to change this over to here? Not necessarily change the costs, but change it into growing enrollments. This is College of Education Behavioral Sciences here, my home college right here, Humanities and Social Sciences. What would it take to move it from here to here? Not, as Chuck said, "What would we do to get rid of this program that's very expensive and declining?" That's not the goal. The goal is, how do we improve it? Okay. There's another, another piece of data that I, I had a sense of this information, and some of you perhaps have a sense of this, but we didn't know it until we saw these data. This is the number of online credit hours in our, in our university, the growth in that over time. You may be thinking that this is academic partnerships, but this is actually data that our Jonesboro campus undergraduate students are taking online classes here, and the growth of online classes for those students. See, our undergraduate student enrollment and online credits has increased by more than 13%, while traditional face-to-face classes is declining. We are becoming, if we're not careful, an online campus for our students. I have students tell me a lot that half their classes are online, and they prefer to be in a classroom. I have students who tell me they're taking a face-to-face class, but they're taking Proctor U exams, they're taking their tests online, and so these are things we have to talk about as a faculty. Is this what we want to be? If we want to go in this direction, then how do we get there? If we don't want to be an online campus, then how do we dial back here? But it's interesting to see these data that are pretty startling. You see the number of credit hours. Now, this is not about revenue-enhancing. This is about quality of life on our campus here. This is an interesting slide on, on library resources. This is the amount of, of funding that the library has on our campus for buying materials, library materials and services, is right here. Here are, this is the benchmark median right here, and here's what we're, here's what we're spending here. We are way above average. The only one, is that, I think that's Texas State University that's higher than us. Everybody else is below us. Most, these are all peer institutions. If we got this expenditure down to the median, that'd be an extra $1 million we could spend to do something different with the library. Those are library fees that we're talking about there, but how could we change how we spend those money? Again, I'm not saying we should. I'm just saying it's interesting to see the data there, the benchmarks, to maybe give us an incentive to maybe think about doing things differently in the library. This is a chart, simple chart on seat utilization. There's 18,500 seats available in classes. This has to do with whether or not you're fully utilizing your classroom space. Do we have too many sections of the same class with empty seats? Can we be more efficient there? That's a, that's a decision that deans and department chairs should, should be making, but they can't make that decision without having the data to look at. It's not something I'm going to be, be pushing. It's something that deans and department chairs might want to. Could we hire one fewer adjunct and have our students be taking classes from our regular faculty if we reutilize our classroom space? So, lots of half-empty classes might, might incentivize us to do something different. And the last thing here, this is one of my last slides here. This is the changing and assignment trends over time. You can see the amount of credit hours being taught by professors, associate professors, and assistant professors, the four-year change. Professors are now generating 28%, 27% fewer credit hours than they were four years ago. Associate professors, 22%. Assistant professors are generating 50% more than they were four years ago. That's just data. I don't know what that means. I don't know the interpretation. Does that mean we have more assistant professors and fewer full professors? That may be an interpretation, but we need to look at that and find out. And then I, then the question is, is that a problem? Is that a bad thing or a good thing? I don't know that, I don't know that, but having access to these data are very interesting. Again, this isn't really so much about saving money or making money, it's just about reorganizing how we do things on the campus. There we go. That was the last slide. So, that was really a brief overview. You will have access to all 350 slides or so, and also access to the Excel spreadsheets, so you can manipulate them if you want to as well, but I'm happy to answer any, tomorrow. We're going to make that, I'll send an email with a link to it tomorrow, but I'm happy to answer any questions you all have now, and I'm sure Chuck is as well.
Dr. McDaniel.
It would be, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk just a moment about shared governance. I heard it mentioned several times today. One of the questions that's kind of been on this campus now for some time, we have a fairly well-developed and well-established shared governance process that does work, if we give it a chance. It does work. It's been refined recently, but we're not real sure how the Systems Office works into the shared governance process. If we're going to make these changes, and it's going to truly be through shared governance, I'm just curious how that, how that the Systems Office factors into our existing shared governance process.
Well, Mike, I think you asked me this question the last time I did a forum in here. I'm going to ask it the next time you hear.
Hey, you'll ask it the next time I'm here, yeah. I don't doubt that. I'll just tell you all this, Mike's my good friend, but he asked me to come to a faculty senate meeting a couple of years ago and talk about the system policies that we had been passing that hadn't gone through shared governance. Unfortunately, I was able to communicate, there wasn't a single one. Every single system policy that we had passed in a Board of Trustees meeting had gone through the shared governance policies. It doesn't happen. Benefits, whatever the case may be, unless it is a state law change that none of us have any control over. The Systems role in this, we're going to continue to encourage our campuses. Our trustees are going to continue to encourage our campuses to be data-informed, to be driven, and try to continue to move the ball up the court, but as we just said, these are going to now come back to the campuses for recommendations. It's not my job, it's not the Systems' job to sit down and determine which programs are doing what and how that ought to be done. That's something that the academic administration on the campuses have to make those decisions in concert with the Chancellor. So, from that standpoint, I mean, it's no different than it's ever going to be. The, the system doesn't get involved in your campus shared governance things. This effort was an effort to better know where we stand, was an effort to get data, was an effort to be more strategic in knowing where we're going, providing that information to the campuses, and allowing our campuses to utilize that. Now, if our campuses say, well, we're just going to ignore that, then yeah, we're probably going to have to get involved. That's not going to happen. Let me tell you something Huron said to us, and I think that, Mike, they said this to the steering committee. They said, "We go to a lot of colleges and universities when we do these studies, and most of the time that we go, it was a good idea from one person, and nobody else is interested in doing anything with it." They said, "That was not what we found at the ASU system." We found a lot of people on the campuses who really wanted this information because they want to improve, they want to try to create a better situation. But if you can give me an example of when the systems ever interfered with shared governance, I'll be happy to answer that, but it doesn't happen. This is going to be a process that is collaborative, that now the information's provided to the campuses, the campuses will do the strategic planning, provide that information back, and it's going to help me, it's going to help us in the efforts that we do in terms of, hopefully, getting some new money. One of the things Governor Hutchinson said to me was, "Chuck, the biggest complaint people have about higher education is you just want more money, but you never change anything." One of the things that the president pro temp, the new president pro temp of the senate said, "If I operated my business like y'all operate colleges and universities, I'd be out of business." Because you don't pay any attention to the trends in the data, you just continue to raise tuition or ask for money. Now, I don't think that's altogether true, but that's the perception. And so this is going to aid us in being able to show, we're doing something most colleges and universities aren't. And that's really trying to be, particularly in Arkansas, trying to be focused on what it is that we're doing. And so that's exactly how we plan to take this information. There were some recommendations that came out of this study that said, you know, you need X at the system level, you need that. One of them was, we needed academic, we would consider getting an academic officer at the system level. We don't need an academic officer at the system level. Do other systems have them? Yeah. We're not to that point yet, the evolution of our system. But one of the things was, maybe looking at the way that we analyze some of this data, and could that be a system-level position? That's something the chancellors, we met with all five chancellors, and they said, "We could have some interest in this." But it's going to have to come from the chancellors to us. It's not going to be me saying, "We're doing this." There's a lot of recommendations in here, some of them we will think are great and do, some probably aren't going to fit as well. But this will be a campus-driven process that everybody will have a say in. Now, at the end of the day, the chancellor and I are the ones responsible for making sure that things are operating smoothly, and we're staying ahead and getting the things done, and able to provide raises, and able to try to keep healthcare down and all of that. But I do believe if we'll utilize this data and everybody work together, we'll have a much better chance of making the right decisions and making sure our resources are where they need to be.
Hey, I just had a comment that, if our programs are listed, there are benefits, and it's not necessarily the areas that we're hired. When we, most of the charts up there are listing our regional universities that are close to us, that are similar in size and scope, but in reality, when we are recruiting new tenure-track faculty, our competition is everywhere. Our competition for quality PhDs that are coming out of for tenure-track positions, to attract them to Jonesboro, isn't just the universities that are around here. And if, when we, the two universities that I worked at previously, and I was only visiting, or I was a post-op, were 10%. They put in 5%, I got 10%. And one, I put in nothing, they put in 10%. So if we start cutting retirement benefits, then we're not going to attract the brightest and the best to come to Jonesboro, Arkansas, because people who want to put down roots are attracted here. Like, I came from University of Michigan, because the cost of living is accessible, it's a good area to raise families, but if you don't have retirement, you don't have healthcare, you can afford, that's a good thing. So I think we need to not just be happy that we can keep what we have and look at the recruitment side of it. That was just a comment.
No, absolutely. I mean, and that'll be a piece of it. And first of all, let me be clear, that decision hadn't been made. I mean, that was just one of their observations and potential recommendations for us to look at. I will tell you that the peer institutions that were utilized in this study were the peer institutions that this institution identified. Because the first question I asked of Huron is, "Where'd you get that peer set?" And they said, "Jonesboro gave it to us." So they used our own self-identified, who we use, through iPads reports and that sort of thing. You know, we had the very same conversation when we made the decision to opt out of APERS and ATRS, and how is that going to impact future recruitment? And certainly, that's a discussion that has to be had, and we have to look at. And there's a multitude of different ways that that can be done. But I think it's one of those things that we're going to look at everything, and again, we have a system-level benefits committee and campus-level benefits committee. So there'll be input from lots of different sources there before any of those kinds of decisions are made. But actually, looking at that, our statewide programs were more similar to ours. It was the out-of-state that were a little bit different. But I think that's a valid point, and definitely something I would expect the committees to look at as they develop recommendations.
Hi, I'm Judy Fremer from nursing, and I have been chairman of the employee benefits committee on this campus. I'm back on the committee this year. And I appreciate that you say you want our employee benefits committee input, but it is difficult when we're not always at the table with the committee. Now, Dr. Fry was very good a couple of years ago and gave up his space for me to represent the college, the university, faculty and staff at the meeting. It shouldn't be that someone has to give up their spot to bring the shared governance to the meeting. And things sometimes get changed from when I've been there, I was the one that, blame it all on me, I agreed to change from Blue Cross and Blue Shield. But from what, when I agreed and what we left with and what we ended up with, there were changes that were made, not through any committee.
So give me an example.
Um, pre-
Pre-certification.
Pre-certification. The next one that was just changed was that therapies do not go towards your deductible, but do get the co-pay. So if you're taking physical therapy, speech therapy, occupational therapy, even though it's at $35 a clip, but if you're going three times a week, there's $105. And you go for eight weeks after that hip's replaced, that's a lot of money. And if you are, like me, who did my hip in December, so I didn't lose any work time, I'm paying in January out of my pocket. So I appreciate that you want to look at our, and what we hear is, only Jonesboro has shared governance. Yes.
No, that's not true.
No, 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 we hear this all the time. I'm sorry, Dr. Welsh, we do.
Oh, okay.
But Jonesboro represents the largest number of employees that are in these benefits.
Sure.
So someone needs to come and represent.
Okay. Thank you. We do have a shared benefits, we do have a system-level benefits committee. I believe Dr. Fry, Lori Nguyen, Annette Huck, so they are all a member of that and attend, or are invited to attend, and then they can come back to the campus and share that with the campus benefits committee, and then we get recommendations back to the system benefits committee from the campus committee. We got a recommendation letter from Dr. Huck's, was that last week, I guess?
Yes.
With some recommendations in there. One of them was about wellness. We said, "Yep, we can do that." One of them was about a newsletter. We said, "Yep, we can do that." One of them was about, I don't remember, the three or four. One of them was about the issue that you raised with regard to certain things counting towards your deductible. There was a lengthy explanation sent back about things that don't count towards your deductible still count towards your out-of-pocket maximum, and because we went with a co-pay system, in the past, it was, we didn't have co-pay systems, and so you had to pay to your deductible before you ever even, you couldn't go to the doctor for $30 or $35, you had to pay up to that full deductible. Now, we have a co-pay, so certain things don't go towards your deductible payment there, but they go to your out-of-pocket maximum. So it's, there's a lot of different moving parts that go there.
You know that it just changed, that therapy just changed last year.
I don't, I mean, I don't sit on that committee and those recommendations, but-
Right. And I'm not arguing with you on this, but I mean-
Sure. That's all right.
You understand this convoluted way that the fringe benefit meeting committee will get a report back from human resources to tell us what the system wants us to do.
Now, that's a recommendation from the system benefits committee, which is all the campuses. That's not necessarily what we're telling to do.
What's there is HR from each campus.
Right.
No faculty, no staff, no constituents.
You should have the chair of your campus benefits committee there.
Not at all your meetings, no.
They were there at the class. We can look at that structure. I mean, I will tell you, I will tell you that our benefits, shared governance system is far more elaborate than what you're going to find at most univers, UA system doesn't even have one. I mean, they just say, "Here's what it's going to be." I mean, we want this, we want you guys to be happy with it just as much as we do. There's a lot of moving parts to this thing, and you know, there were things like, with Obamacare, we had to be grandfathered in or grandfathered out status, and we couldn't make certain changes, or we could make certain changes, and then you have to look at, if you do make that change, how does that affect this issue over here? You know, if you compare our plan to the other higher education plans in the state, and if you compare our plan to, we actually have a document I'd be happy to share, if you compare our plan to all of the other state plans, it's far superior to any of those plans.
And I have them for the last 12 years.
Sure.
For the same comparison.
Sure.
I can share back with you.
Yeah, I mean-
What I really got up to talk about was, oh, all right, I teach in nursing.
Right.
We have an associate degree program that we offer here in Jonesboro, and we send it up through press video to three other campuses. There doesn't seem to be any over, you keep saying everything is campus-driven, campus decisions. No one seems to be looking at the big picture. A few years ago, ASU Newport started to have an LPN to RN program, and they went in a consortium. Wouldn't it have made more sense if they went with an ASU system? ASU Mountain Home started a LPN to RN program at ASU Mountain Home, where we are delivering an ASU Mountain Home LPN to RN program. The latest thing we've been told is ASU Newport is starting an associate degree program out here at ASU Technical Center. So it doesn't seem that anyone is overlooking, are we duplicating services? Now, if ASU Jonesboro doesn't need to be in associate degree education, that's a decision that we need to look at and decide, but-
And there are certainly those out there that believe that. I'm not saying I do, but there are those that do, sure.
I'm a nurse, I can work no matter what.
Sure.
I might be old, but I still can work, no matter where.
Sure.
But what are we doing? What are we doing? Because if I'm a parent paying for education, and I can pay ASU Newport tuition, or I can pay ASU Jonesboro tuition, I'm going to pay ASU Newport and save my money for the bachelor's and the master's degree. So is there any way that, we find new programs, do we read it in the newspaper? That's not the way to run-
You found out new programs, so-
ASU Mountain Home, we found out by an article in the newspaper.
But should they run their curriculum programming through this campus?
When the one, we're already delivering it to their campus.
Right.
Should we have been, hey, we're going to start our own program, maybe you guys don't need to come?
I think there were discussions there, because I was privy to some of those. So there were discussions with this campus, it may not, you may not have been communicated to you. What we tell our two-year campuses is, Jonesboro gets first right of refusal if you're going to do these kinds of programs. If Jonesboro can't do it, won't do it, whatever the case may be, then you've got to do what you've got to do to make sure you're being provided. The other thing is, there are a lot of these local hospitals and other programs that want to work with their local campus, and we've got to make sure that those local programs are serviced, and it depends on the program. But I know for a fact that Mountain Home has had a number of conversations, because it came up when Ozarka was wanting to start their own master's degree in nursing and do these kinds of things. It didn't happen, obviously, they're still talking about it. But some of those conversations have definitely happened. These things aren't just necessarily happening in a vacuum, and I don't, the Newport associate's degree, that's news to me. I don't think there's been any discussion of it. It certainly hasn't been presented to us. But these things get presented, and we have those conversations with the campuses as those things are presented, and talk about how that's going to be coordinated, but-
Yes, as far as we know about ASU Mountain Home, we were not talked to in nursing.
There were some discussions, I don't know who they were, I can certainly follow up on that, but I know there were some.
You know, and ASU Newport for their, going to that consortium, was not brought back to us, they didn't even say that. So there is gaps, big gaps, and we don't have the money to give the same, I mean, it's a waste of money to have nurses teaching the same program in the same campus, just enro, enrich enrollment in one program. And, you know, and we got enough nurses here in Jonesboro, people that want to be nurses, we can just run the programs here if we had, you know, so I just want somebody looking at, where are we duplicating?
We definitely look at it, but I think at the same time, in defense of our other campuses, they are, you know, they need to have the ability to be able to create their own curriculum too, and not be necessarily dictated by another.
I understand, but here at ASU Technical Center-
Right.
You can go take English.
Yeah.
Algebra, biology.
Yep. Let me speak to that.
Yeah, I mean-
Yeah, let me speak to that. That was Delta Vocational Technical School for a number of years.
Under us, yeah.
And back a number, well, no, not under us originally. And a number of years ago, all those vocational tech, not all, but the vast majority of the vocational technical schools were merged into existing campuses. At Delta VOTech, which had campuses at Mark Tree and out at the Industrial Park in Jonesboro, was merged into this campus. Now, the primary purpose of that campus was to teach welding, machining, mechatronics, programs that this campus is not likely going to teach. My predecessor made the decision that that was probably better suited to be with a community college, because they are better versed in teaching welding and mechatronics and computerized numerical control and those kinds of things. And so that change was made. And they started that campus out there. Regardless if they're teaching all technical degree programs, they have to have a certain number of general education components to be able to offer an associate's degree in welding, or an associate's degree in whatever the case may be. So that's a natural part of that. Jonesboro, Arkansas was the only significant metropolitan area in the state of Arkansas that didn't have its own two-year institution in the town. So obviously, hey, when I went to Fayetteville, kids drove up to Northwest Arkansas Community College, people at UALR drive over to Plaskey Tech. That's just the nature of how some of those things happen. But one of the things that we have talked to Newport about is that, we don't want that to become a general education campus. It needs to continue to be a technical and vocational campus. But as their technical and vocational programs grow, obviously, the general education hours that are required go with it. But did you know that we actually have programs from this campus that call Newport every semester and ask them to offer certain courses? Because it can't be offered here, it doesn't fit in the cycle of the way things are offered here, or whatever. So Newport offers those classes, and then they get criticized for offering those classes. The other thing is, about two years ago, we took a look at all the enrollment that was at that ASU Newport-Jonesboro, whatever you call it, Technical Center. And they've seen a lot of growth. Now, a lot of their growth has come from the Newport campus. It's just people that were in Jonesboro driving to Newport are now just staying in Jonesboro. But one of the anecdotes was, they're stealing all of our enrollment from ASU Jonesboro. And so we actually looked at the numbers. The vast majority of students that were enrolled there, A, weren't admissible to ASU Jonesboro under our new admissions standards, the vast majority of the ones that were admissible to ASU Jonesboro were enrolled in technical programs that ASU Jonesboro doesn't offer. I think, my math may not be right, I think there were 27 students over there that were fully admissible to Jonesboro that weren't enrolled in a technical program. So it's not quite as rampant as perhaps some think, or some of the anecdotes are. Some of it is, they're fulfilling a service, they're directly getting requested from Jonesboro. I've had the chancellor from Newport call me and go, "They want me to teach this, what am I supposed to do?" And I say, "Well, you teach it. I mean, if students need it and Jonesboro needs it, teach it." But yes, we're looking at that, we're trying to monitor that, but there's a service there that has to be provided, it does come with some general education. Now, can we forbid a student that's enrolled here from saying, "Hey, I'm going to go take math over there?" That's almost impossible. And if we did that, some other community, probably, community college would just come to Jonesboro and start offering the same course and getting them, or they'd go to Paragould and take it, or something of that nature. So it's complex, but yes, we do oversee that, we do manage it, but it's not nearly having the impact on this campus by the numbers we look at, is what perhaps some of the anecdotes may suggest.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let me say something, I mean, I took Dr. Dampfis over to Newport, or over to the Jonesboro campus a couple of, well, it was a month ago or so, to look at ways that we can partner, ways that we can ensure that we're not having duplication, ways they can work together, and he and Dr. Massey are doing exactly that. We feel like there's actually a real opportunity for this campus that we're missing out on right now.